Falmouth Community Television's coverage of town meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747 or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
I know we're gonna wait for Doug Jones. Everybody else ready to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. So FCTV, we're gonna get started in just two seconds. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for a bit of a shorter agenda this evening for July 2nd for the Board of Selectmen. I'm just going to, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and then I will read some of the instructions for our virtual meeting. So if you would just join us in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Great. Thank you. Anything for, actually, let me read the instructions and we'll go to recognition. So as has been the practice now for several months, we are conducting this meeting via Zoom. This is in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. We, as we have been doing all along, we are providing the links so folks can join this meeting using the chat function to share any of their thoughts or ask questions about any matter that is before this board. If individuals are unable to do that or aren't comfortable with it, we really encourage folks to reach out to us in advance with any questions. If they have comments that they would like us to read, either in as it pertains to a particular subject matter or during the public comment period, feel free to send those to us via email and we will do so if you are not comfortable joining us via chat. All of the information about how to join this meeting is at the, on the town website under the section for the Select Board. So you can take a look as to how you can join this Zoom meeting and participate. Obviously, anyone who is participating, I just would remind everyone that we try to keep our microphones muted when we're not speaking to avoid background noise. And just a reminder that if you are, anything that's on your computer or your phone or your tablet could be shared to the whole meeting if you happen to utilize the share content function. So just to be aware of that and be careful with it. We will certainly try to, you know, move along. We encourage anyone who wishes to for hearings or for any of the other items on the agenda. Those individuals will have the opportunity to speak. We'll have you brought in if you're having any technical difficulties. Please let us know in advance so we can try and get you connected during the time that you are scheduled on the agenda. Okay, so with that being said, anything for recognition, Mr. Brown?
Nothing specific, but it occurred to me when I was reviewing the national situation with COVID and then the Massachusetts situation. I'd like to recognize the people in Massachusetts for being responsible, wearing the masks. It's inconvenient, it's not cool, but you know, we're doing it, we're doing what we have to do to stay healthy and stay safe. And I think our general public should be recognized for being, doing the right thing. I think we're doing a good job.
Great. Yeah, well said. And just, you know, the corollary to that is that we need to keep doing that good job. And that as we are seeing in some of these other states that opened up fairly rapidly, it is really a challenge to keep numbers in the range that we can manage them and at the same time really let up on some of those social distancing practices and safety practices. So hopefully, we will continue to see that good behavior. Sam?
Along those lines, I just want to mention, I'm sure you have noticed, but the traffic and the number of people in town is just mushroomed. So it means that we need to be practicing all those protective measures, especially now because there's bound to be a few COVID cases among that population. They're coming in from all over the country.
Right.
Yeah, I think there was a five-mile backup at the bridge today at one point in time. So certainly a lot of visitors and we hope that they're able to enjoy their time here safely. But you know, just, you know, I have seen fairly good compliance and hopefully it'll stay that way. So. Great. Any announcements? No? Okay. Is there any public comment? I don't see any right now in the chat, but did anyone receive, while we wait to allow people time to enter in a public comment in chat, did anyone on the board receive something that someone requested to be read into public comment? Okay.
No, we see quite a few comments in email, but nothing that was actually asked to be read in, so.
Right. Right. Okay. Excellent. So the first thing, we're gonna take things a little bit out of order. And we are going to get a beach update from Maggie Clayton. And just here as we go into the Fourth of July weekend, obviously, we are in a very different place than we normally would be. We are not having some of the large events that we would have, but we also are dealing with beaches that are, the parking lots are at half capacity. And as we've all just talked about, we have a lot of individuals in town presumably hoping to use some of those facilities. So we just wanted to hear from Maggie about how things are going in terms of, you know, what staffing might be like, what we might want to look forward to. So that we have that information, we can share that with the public. So if we could bring Maggie in, there she is. Hi, how are you? Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Great. So do you want to just give us an overview of anything you think we should know and then if there are questions, folks can ask them?
Sure. So we increased our signage this week leading up to the Fourth of July weekend. The Barnstable County reopening task force issued us 45 aluminum signs to supplement the 11-by-17 laminated versions that we had staple gunned around our 10 locations. Staff is fully back. Last Wednesday, we held orientation via Zoom. And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we held small group trainings or what would normally be our water clinic day before we transitioned from preseason to opening season. And, or opening full season, excuse me. And everyone's excited to be back. Staff were issued two masks as part of their uniform this year. And along the lines of COVID-19 protocols, what we're modeling and asking the public when they come to the beach, staff is expected to wear a mask when they're within six feet of another patron. So for lifeguards, when they're in a lifeguard stand, they're six feet up in the air. But if they come down to answer a question, perform first aid, walk to the bathroom, get equipment from their car or another location, they're asked to put on the mask. They don't have to wear it in the water when doing exercise with the equipment. And for the parking attendants, they have to wear them when they're doing ticket sales or if they're within six feet of a person. And the clerks have been doing this since the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend. They wear masks their entire shift in the building. We have two clerks on the counter instead of three for social distance. And we appreciate the public for understanding that we can only have two of them or so in the building at a time to be waited upon. We have sold about 9,600 resident taxpayer stickers as of the end of day today. That's lower than usual, but I think a promising number in terms of the interest people have in accessing our beaches for mental health, physical health, and an idea of summer. And our staffing levels are normal. We were able to fully hire the number of staff we need. We have 57 full-time lifeguards, 30 full-time parking attendants, five full-time clerks, plus nine administrative staff, and a few other part-time or per diem staff that have worked for the department in years past. I think that's it.
Great. Thank, could you off the top of your head, if, so 9,000 is low, where would we maybe be this time of year, kind of normally, if you know?
So I think we're, we're at 9,600 and normally where we would be in the 11,000, 12,000 range. Our sticker sales generally drop after the Fourth of July. But we'll see, because we are not issuing the weekly non-residents as well, there's an adjustment there.
Right. Great. Thank you. Doug, I saw, Doug Jones, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
It might be appropriate to bring Scott McGann into this because I'm just wondering from Maggie as to how crowded the beaches are, that if we made the beach parking a little bit bigger, could the beaches still hold it and still be able to maintain the social distancing we're looking for?
So right now, the signage says for groups to be 12 feet apart, and that's to allow six feet of walking distance on either side. The parking lots at 50% have fully filled across town three days that we've staffed since Memorial Day weekend. We're not restricting drop-offs, bike, or pedestrian access at this time.
I think Maggie froze.
You want me to kind of chime in on that too?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Scott.
Um, we do get complaints, primarily Old Silver. Generally, by Monday morning, we do have several complaints. I'm not gonna tell you we don't get complaints. It's, is it an issue? Well, it's tough to keep some of the smaller beaches with large amount of parking socially distant. So I think it depends on the beach whether the additional parking can handle it or not. I don't know if Maggie would agree with that, but you know, we do get complaints about the beaches and about the crowding of the beaches, yes.
Maggie, were you able to hear Scott's? Oh, sorry, Doug.
About the beaches being too crowded?
Yes.
Okay.
Mainly Old Silver, occasionally Chappie. I have not gotten that from many of the other beaches.
Because in my drive, it looks like that both Mill Road and Surf Drive Beach could probably add another quarter percent or 25%. And the beaches would still be funny. People could still do the social distancing that's being asked at those two beaches.
Yeah, and Surf Drive, you've got, you've got a whole length of Surf Drive and do it, right? But you don't have, because it's not confined on two sides like, you know, the other two beaches I mentioned.
Right.
I wonder if I could, I wonder if Falmouth Heights Beach could be open completely because it's such a small parking lot and parking in the Heights is so desperately needed.
And most people, most people essentially walk there from the Heights. So that's where you get the most of your beach crowd anyway. So yeah, so each beach on a case by case, in my opinion, would be what? But I don't want to speak for Maggie.
Yeah, Maggie, what are, what are your thoughts about sort of in general that, those kind of questions about parking and crowding?
Um, so the, on June 4th, myself, one of my parking lot supervisors, Peter McConerty and Jim Grady at the DPW, Peter Johnson Staub from the Town Manager's Office, and a representative from the Police Department, we went around and looked at the barricade placement. And at seven of the 10 beaches, we were able to get through in a couple of hours. And that's when we added the blocks to McGansett that hadn't been there. We adjusted the placement of blocks at Old Silver and Chappaquaig and the Heights to give more ocean-facing spaces and block off inland-facing spaces for people who want to use, to want to sit in their car and eat their lunch and then leave. We started, we've done 50% across the board and we haven't moved anything yet. I'm sure we'll discuss now that the Governor has said opening to Phase 3, what that means for people. But for now, we're still seeing the crowds with it at 50%. So I don't know that opening up the parking lot will get more people on or or ameliorate people. I don't know.
Any other questions for Maggie? Great. So do you have any, you know, could you just tell us what your thoughts for you know, the upcoming Fourth of July, any extra asks that you're asking of people as we kind of shift into high gear, just for the public to hear from you? You know, some of the things that are on those signs or whatever, you know, whatever you're observing.
Sure. So in anticipation of the holiday weekend, we know many businesses are closed and observing tomorrow. So we do have extra staff on, on Saturday especially for the Fourth of July. But we've worked with the Parks Department for Goodwill Park. We've worked with the Town Manager's Office and the Police Department. As of July 1st, we have assigned police officers to the Heights Beach and to Old Silver. That they are respectful of their staff and other beachgoers, be patient with the staff. When the lot is full, there are not many beaches where you can form a queue line in your car. You really do have to circle or find another location because you can't pull on the side of the road and block traffic. A problem for the emergency responders as well as general traffic. I know that Surf Drive has had that issue when Black Board Member Jones was saying it looks like there's a lot of parking there. A lot of those cars are coming in to get stickers and then leaving. So we just ask for your patience and hope that you can come and be safe. We do not have shower towers or changing rooms available to anyone at this time. But the bathroom facilities are open at Surf Drive and Old Silver. And there are portable toilets at each of the other eight locations in town.
And the snack bars are open, correct?
Yes. The Dogs and Hogs snack shack at Surf Drive is open. The Burger Shack at Old Silver is, their hours are 11 to 6 daily. But they're outside vendor, so that could change. And we are accepting cash, exact change, or credit card at the three pay beaches. Old Silver is $20, Surf Drive, Mill Road, and Manot East, the side of the beach closer to Central Ave, are all $15 to park.
Great. Any, any questions for Maggie?
Questions? I'm not sure if it's a question for Maggie or for Scott. But when do you think those shower towers are gonna be usable? Do you know when that is?
Next week. We're going to, yep. Once we got the green light about Phase 3, it was a little too short of notice for us to get them out for the weekend, but they will be installed at the beginning of next week.
That's great. Just want to say it's, you know, this has just been so impressive with all of these challenges, what you, you know, the Beach Department has been able to do. And I went to, I of course, like many people, waited to the very last minute to get my beach sticker the day that it was suddenly needed. You know, totally forgetting about it. And I drove by and the line was, you know, at Surf Drive all the way to the, where the sand started. And I thought, this is a nightmare, but I'll just get in line. And it moved so quickly. All of the folks working were really wonderful and just did such a good job at kind of keeping the line moving and making sure people were social distancing. So just very impressed with everyone, you know, just working under such tough circumstances, but making it look, from what I've seen, the number of times I've been at the facilities, making it look pretty effortless. So huge thanks to your department and to all of your staff. And to you of course.
I will pass that along. They're a great group to lead. I've loved being part of this department for 14 years.
Great. Thank you so much, Maggie. I'm sure we'll be hearing from you as, as things update. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, oh, hold on, my, okay. Okay, we're gonna return back to the regular order of things. So we're gonna have an update from Scott on COVID-19 issues. So welcome, Scott.
Hi. Well, so we're, we're doing really well count-wise. We had one case over the past seven days. That person, I think, has cleared isolation. So I think we're pretty close to zero of active in-isolation cases. Obviously, the population's increasing. And, you know, when you do contact tracing, you only have access to your town and your town residents. So that aside, I don't have access to what's going on from somebody that would come unless there's a case that would be shared from another municipality. So, you know, as terms of Falmouth residents, we're doing really well. Hopefully, it stays that way. The, the state metrics look good. I think the other day, we had our first zero for deaths during the day. I believe that was yesterday. And 70 cases. So in that, in that regard, the metrics continue to look good. The test, the percent positive is under 3%. I think it's 1.8% now. All the numbers show that it's on a downward trend and continuing on that way. Today, the Governor announced, if you didn't know, that we're going to a two-step Phase 3, which is Phase 3 is gonna take a long time. It's gonna take a while to be, it's not gonna be that three-week, one to two. And then, you know, the two steps within Step 2 is gonna be relatively quick, I mean relatively long, sir. Which allows other entities such as, I'm drawing a blank right now. I just did the PowerPoint presentation. What was it? The main things there? Wow, really have a brain cramp on that one. But it's allowing some other things to open. I had the whole thing in front of me, but it's on my other desk. I had to jump on this desk. And with Phase 3, it's gonna be slow. It's going to be, if you give me one second, grab that.
Yep, yeah, take your time.
Give me one second.
Yep.
I got it. I had notes on it.
Go ahead, Doug.
Maggie, I've got three questions for Scott while he's getting that information that I'd like to just put out there.
Okay.
And it probably doesn't make sense to ask the questions while he's not here. Because he won't get a chance to hear them. But one, and maybe this is still a question that Maggie put out there. I would think it might make sense if we could tonight, maybe make some decisions about some of these parking lots that could be expanded a little bit. Just because I think there is interest in getting these beaches for parking where the beaches themselves. And I'm particularly thinking as Mr. Brown said, the Heights Beach, Surf Drive Beach, and the Mill Road Parking Lot, that might be able to be expanded a little bit more parking. Because I'm sure we have residents who would love to be able to use those beaches as they try to get, get their mental health improved by getting to places where they aren't in that much danger.
Okay, so maybe we can, why don't we use this time, is there any way, maybe Peter Johnson Staub, do you think that we'd be able to perhaps get Maggie back with us? And we can have a conversation with Scott and perhaps have Maggie weigh in on that if necessary. She may have gone off to do whatever she needs to do for the night, but if we could just maybe check and see?
Yeah, no, she's here. We can certainly bring her back on. Tommy, you can go ahead and do that. I guess if I, if I have the floor for a moment, I just want to make sure that it is, in my speaking with Maggie and her staff several times over the last couple of weeks, and the Board members may have observed this themselves, but I just want to be sure that everyone is aware there is widespread non-compliance with social distancing requirements at the beaches as of now. It's certainly worst at Old Silver. But I think it's, you know, pretty significant at many of the beaches. I think at Falmouth Heights, there's fairly frequent non-compliance with social distancing. So I just want to be sure that, I know it's a very tricky balance because outdoors is safer than indoors. I just want to make sure that that's in, in your minds as you consider adjusting the existing parking restrictions.
And this might be actually a good time to ask Scott the question since his return. Because this also relates to the bike path. We've heard numerous concerns about that. And I guess I would love to hear Scott's personal opinion or professional opinion on the likelihood of transmitting the virus if you're outside within six feet of each other in passing as you walk by each other, even if you're not wearing masks. My understanding is the transmission of the disease as you walk by somebody outside is very, very low if you're not even talking to each other. If you're just walking by without talking, it's a very low chance within six feet.
That's my understanding as well.
And as in low, I'm saying one out of a million, one out of 10 million.
I don't think they have, they don't have quite that stats. They don't have those stats per se. But there has, there's, the likelihood of transmission outdoors is exceedingly low. The bike path complaints, we do get bike path complaints. Just like we get the beach complaints or, we get dozens of complaints every day of different kinds.
Actually, I'm gonna interrupt you because my concern is the complaints seem almost to be more the problem than the problem itself. Is that people are so preoccupied with what other people are doing when if they would just get the information that once you're outside, relax a little bit because the mirror idea of being in the open air does make a huge difference than being inside. Inside, absolutely, you must wear a mask. Everyone needs to be masked. Outside, you're actually healthier to not care so much about what other people are doing. I think the emotional distress that people are calling for, causing themselves by being so upset by what other people are doing is actually doing way more damage than the potential mask that they must wear when you're walking by someone six feet away outside.
It is definitely safer to be outside.
And I guess I would, if I can just add to that, because I know we've gotten, and then we'll go back to Scott and then we'll talk about the beaches. I know we've gotten a lot of folks who are concerned, and I, I absolutely understand, you know, people being concerned about both the beach, you know, and the bike path. But, you know, I think the reality is, you know, we had somebody saying about how folks were riding and their children, the little kids were on bicycles, riding. You know, the, the practicality of having small children on bikes, you know, with masks in the heat, you know, riding on the bike path. I think, you know, folks are, it's, we're making some hard decisions and hopefully people are using the science and the facts to make those decisions and, and thinking, you know, we're passing each other on the bike path. It's outside, it's outdoors, and this is the place where, you know, maybe I'm not going to be able to force my, you know, four-year-old to keep this mask on while they're riding bikes. I mean, you know, it's hard to strike that balance, and I feel for folks, particular who are, who are in that higher risk bracket, who want to be able to use the bike path and do in the offseason and felt safer doing so, and now, you know, feel that they're unsafe. But, you know, we are trying to strike a balance. We are a tourist community, and we invite people, and we really need those tourists and visitors to be here for the summer to, to really support our economy. Obviously, we're asking everyone to comply and be safe, but I do think that it is, it's a line that we're walking. You know, when people are at the beach, they're not going to keep their mask on the entire time that they're at the beach. And I think at some point, we have to accept that. And then, if that's very bothersome to us, for whatever the reason is, maybe we need to alter some of our patterns of use of some of those resources. So it's just, you know, I know we've heard a lot from folks, and there's some limitation to what we're able to do about some of those things. You know, I don't think we're going to have anyone policing the bike path. It's just not feasible. So anyway, Scott, it's you. Do you want to comment on just any of your thoughts about, about that? Or go back to what you were telling us about the phase three, the two parts?
No, I mean, outside's outside and inside's inside. I mean, it's definitely huge difference. But as far as phase three, sorry, I didn't have the paperwork with me. Gyms and fitness centers at 40% occupancy with face coverings. Museums, historical facilities with small guided tours. Pro sports without spectators, which if you're a sports fan, is a big deal. Some human service programs, such as like day services, adult day services and things like that. Indoor long-term care visitations with a lot of restrictions. Casinos came to mind as well. And then also in gatherings, indoors, max of eight people per thousand square feet of space, up to 25.
Could you say that again? I'm sorry, Scott, could you say that again?
Indoor, max of eight people per thousand square feet, up to 25. That's for gatherings. And outdoor gatherings, which when we talk about the movie theater will matter, but the outdoor that we talk about later, the outdoor. Outdoor max, 25% permitted occupancy, up to 100 people in a single outdoor space. So that's not everything that's in phase three, so we're going to do two steps in phase three. And wherever step two is, I don't know when step two will be. And then the other thing was to mention is that as far as 14-day quarantines, New England states and the two, New York, New Jersey, are all, you do not have to do the 14-day quarantine when, in those, within New England, New York, New Jersey area. That's not part of phase three. That was a separate announcement, if you guys didn't happen to catch that. So that was sort of what phase three is in a nutshell. I mean, is there any specific questions on that one?
Anyone have any questions on that particular piece? Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things that I'm picking up and listening to the Tony Fauci, other physicians to talk about, there's an exposure thing. If you had a heated challenge to somebody on the bike path, you greatly increase your chances of actually getting some kind of infection as a result of the transfer of those aerosol particles. So I, I think people need to realize they, being hostile is actually increasing your risk. So, you know, staying away, yeah, that's a good thing, and trying to distance. But if people are going to challenge other people, they're probably going to produce more aerosols and increase the likelihood of infection. So I think that's a piece of this whole thing, is the interaction that takes place. And certainly, when people in groups, they have to worry. You know, if this is loud, raucous, people cheering, you know, being loud and boisterous, they're more likely to spread aerosol particles or be the victim of it being spread toward them. There is a physics of this that people need to respect.
Well, singing, singing and yelling does increase the amount of stuff that would come out of the mouth in order, that is true.
Any other questions for Scott? Go ahead, Doug Brown. It looks like you're trying to, go ahead.
Yep, back to the original question of the beaches.
About the parking lots.
Yeah, do you think that we have some latitude to increase some parking in some of these beaches if Maggie spots areas that are not too busy?
I'm not policing the beach, you know, I'm not out there necessarily policing the beaches. Maggie's people are out there policing the beaches. It should be better to say whether they're doing 12 people between the blankets. We're really battling the indoor non-compliance more than I am. I'm prioritizing the indoor complaints over the outdoor complaints for obvious reasons. There's only two of us to go out and do it. But I would defer to Maggie. I think, you know, certain, my just personal opinion was different beaches have different challenges, and I would defer to her whether you could or couldn't. You know, I'm just, you know, I give the guidance out and then it would enforce it. And the operator, she's the operator, just like, I wouldn't tell, you know, Joe Schmo's snack bar that, you know, I give them the guidance, and if they didn't meet the guidance, tell them to meet the guidance, but not necessarily determine what to do in order to get there.
So Maggie, what have your, you and your staff been seeing in terms of compliance? Where, you know, we're here, we're hearing that a lot of folks would like to use, you know, have more access to the beach than the 50% allows, but at the same time, we're also hearing that a lot, you know, there's a lot of non-compliance with folks not quite being spread out as much. So what, what are you seeing and what are your thoughts?
So I've seen compliance in terms of masks in the bathrooms at Old Silver and Surf Drive. In general, we don't ask people to wear their masks when they're sitting in their spot on the beach, but if they're walking over to talk to a friend, they should wear a mask. And not everyone does. I feel that the staff doesn't want to potentially add more.
No.
Please to the beach, because we've, there are a couple of locations. Stony is one that I'm thinking of, where people can get close to the lifeguard chairs. And a lot of times, that people who don't bring their own umbrella want to sit in the lifeguard stand shade, and that feels very close, even though the lifeguards are six feet up in the air. So the parking attendants have been taking a lot of heat from people who are upset about the length of a queue line or being told where to park when we park one by one at the shoot at Old Silver. So I'm open to adjusting the barriers, but I do want to make sure that we have support for the staff, because I don't, I don't foresee allowing an extra 10 spaces of parking to dramatically tip the scales one way or the other about easing the complaints or non-compliance.
And can I just ask you a question? In terms of what you're observing with people spacing, aside from the masks, I mean, what are you observing with people spacing? I know we're just kind of really ramping up in terms of, of summer, but what are you seeing so far for spacing, particularly at the high-usage beaches like Old Silver?
So we, yeah, we only have anecdotal evidence for full-season operations, about four days worth, because we opened all beaches with staff on Saturday, June 27th. And I think I got that right. And then Bristol is the last beach to get fully staffed yesterday because of building the additional chairs. We had a little bit of a staggered start there. But we've fielded complaints at the bathhouse about Chapacoyt and Old Silver. I think because we don't have a way to equitably block access for drop-offs or bike or pedestrian access, it is a beach-by-beach preference. There are people who, if they get to Woodneck and it's full, are willing to drive to Surf Drive because it's, still has parking spaces and is open. And there are people who will just live or, live or die at that, at their one beach. So I, when I, from my office, I can see one small section of Surf Drive, and I would say that it's populated, but it's not crowded and people, but that is one of the beaches that's a long, thin strip.
Okay. Any, yep, Doug Brown, and then go ahead.
Just generally speaking, if you, do you see any areas of any beaches where we may increase the parking? Do you think either the Heights, Surf Drive, or maybe even Manaut? And maybe you're not ready to answer that, but I hope that you maybe can ask your staff to keep an eye out and see if these beaches are not being overpopulated, if there is room to add a little more spaces, it would be nice if we could.
Yes, I think that we would need a little bit more evidence. And from my, my people who are my eyes and ears, right, the, the frontline workers, from 16-year-olds to retirees that I have out there in the parking booths and in the lifeguard chairs, my lot supervisors and my staff guards who are going around and getting to see more than one beach at a time. I've been pretty limited in what I've been able to see with full operation. But it's a frequent non-compliance. I am concerned that if we open it up, it will just have more non-compliance.
As it does, you may tell on June 13th to make any more decisions on this.
July 13th, right. So I was going to say, if we, if we're able to perhaps, Maggie, you know, just really asking folks and for yourself to be able to observe over the holiday weekend, and then perhaps have you back on July 13th at our next meeting to revisit this, once we've had maybe a full weekend of, although I don't know if the weather will fully cooperate, but at least of, you know, a holiday weekend where we know we have a lot of people in town, to kind of really have a better sense of what compliance looks like.
Yes, I would, I'd be happy to gather and come back on the 13th with the reintroduction of the shower towers and with people who are attending the beaches for the first time seeing these rules, we'll see what the regular usage looks like after the fourth.
Great. Any other questions for Maggie? Great, thank you so much. Thanks for, for sticking around. We appreciate that. And Scott, anything further?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Doug Brown.
I forgot to ask one question. Last year, we put a lot of effort into putting fencing around all the structures at Manaut West, you know, the dangerous concrete and so forth. Has that been boarded up again?
Yes, Peter McConerty and his team, Jim Grady, Mike Souza, they, they worked on this about two weeks ago, I would say, before, before we really opened, after receiving some complaints from patrons who are residents and taxpayers, part of the Davisville Neighborhood Association, et cetera. We were able to put up that fencing, and we do now have those two lifeguards in that area off by Foster Road, so they're close by.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Scott, yep.
Well, first off, when I said that the counts are good, that doesn't mean we stop wearing the mask. I think Doug Brown, you mentioned that when you were talking a few minutes back. You still got to, this thing can blow up really quick, and we still want to make sure everybody's diligent. The only thing I wanted to add is, the main way you would test through Cape Cod Healthcare was at Four Seas, the drive-through. That's going to go away, all right? And it's going to go, it's going to go to Cape Cod Hospital. It's already at Falmouth Hospital. So you wouldn't have to go all the way to Four Seas now, you could go to Falmouth Hospital. If you drive down, if you happen to be down to Hune, you can see the backside over near the Lilly Lobby. There's a parking lot between Lilly Lobby and Hune, where they're doing the testing. Also, you know, your walk-in clinics, and I've been told that CVS and East Falmouth also does testing. So if you need a test, there's, you know, there's tests available if you need it. That's the other thing I wanted to bring up as well.
Right, thank you. Great, and, and I've actually been, I had to be back in that hospital area, and all the times that I've been back there, there's really no line. So, you know, people are, initially were concerned that it was difficult, you know, when it first opened up to kind of get there, but it's, it's pretty open back there. So hopefully, folks will take advantage of it.
Yeah, and if it's, and if you're symptomatic, and a lot of people aren't symptomatic, because you remember, with all the social distancing, it didn't also help with COVID. It also helped with others, other respiratory illnesses as well.
Yeah.
So it's probably just a lot of that, lot less respiratory illnesses out there. And the need for testing for that is lower.
Do you have to have a doctor's order to get tested?
Through Cape Cod Healthcare, yes, okay. They have, they have a, I can give you the number right now, but they have a dedicated call center, which is 508-862-5595. They can make arrangements. So if you didn't have a physician, you were traveling, they can make arrangements, they can take care of that. I don't think you need it, you definitely wouldn't need it for a walk-in clinic, because they would have a physician on staff that could do it, right? And then I believe you don't need one at CVS, but I'm not 100% familiar with their procedures, because it's a private entity. But yeah, generally speaking, Cape Cod Healthcare would want some physicians.
Scott, I have a question. Isn't it true that if you wanted to really get tested, you could just go and pay for a test, $120 or something?
That's the antibody test, I think.
That's totally different. We're talking, I'm sorry, let me, let me, let me, the test I'm talking about is the real, you know, what I call the real, but it's the swab test to see if there's active virus. That's the test I'm talking about. Antibodies you can get, but that's only going to tell you that you were sick in the past. I think it takes up to about three weeks for the antibodies to show up. So that's good. Let's say you, let's say it'd be good if you weren't to know if, mid-February, you had a flu and you didn't know what it was, right? It might not have been the flu. I mean, we had it, we had it a lot earlier than we thought, especially if you were a traveler. So maybe you go get the antibodies to see if you had it. So that's a totally different, that's not going to tell you active infections. It's what we call probables. So when you look at probables on the state website, that's, a lot of times, those are antibody tests.
And people can do that through Quest. You can just do it yourself.
Yeah, but we're not using that for quarantine and isolation purposes, because it's a past infection. We're taking actual live swabs.
Yep.
It seems like eventually, we're going to want to do that with a lot of folks, so we can know where we're really at.
Yeah, it'll tell you, it'll tell you, you know, like New York, you know, was it five times, 10 times the amount of people actually had the infection? Yeah. I mean, there's, obviously, we have 202 swab test positive cases. The numbers with the antibodies would be some number higher than that, which we're not sure, but that is. So we might have, I think we've got 40 or 50 of those, that people went out and got that antibody test.
And now the immunity from antibodies is not guaranteed. We didn't really have very little information about what having the antibodies means from an immunity point of view.
Yeah, especially if you were one of the more asymptomatic or low, low symptom person, you seem to have less of the antibodies. That's one of the more recent sort of studies of what they think.
Great. Any other, anything else, Scott? I know you're sticking around for some of our other conversations, but anything else we should know at this point?
No, I mean, let's just keep hoping that we, we keep going in this course.
Yep. Great, thank you. So we'll keep Scott, because he's going to weigh in on, on some of these other issues. So next, what we'll do is, we're going to have a discussion about, obviously, we've been, the town has been processing quite a few of the temporary, the permits and licenses for temporary outdoor seating and for expansion of, of the area in which restaurants can serve alcohol. And, you know, it's, it's been challenging, because, you know, each restaurant sort of runs their restaurant in a very unique way, and some places have space that they're able to easily, you know, move into, other places not so much. And some certain, you know, ways of doing business are easier to accommodate some of those requirements that came down from the governor and, and, you know, more so than others. So I think at this point, Julian, how many has the town processed? Do you know how many licenses at this point?
Yes, I've signed 31, and there are another, I believe, half dozen, which are in various stages of review.
Great. So quite, you know, obviously, a vast majority of the ones that have come in are done. And one, you know, one particular, you know, plan that has been really tough and challenging just because of the nature of the, the way that the business is set up, it was the permit for seafood sams, mainly because, you know, it's a place where you go in, you put in your order, you get your buzzer, and you wait for your buzzer to go off and you pick up your food. I think, you know, Mike Lewis did a great job with the outdoor seating area. It looked really beautiful, really well spaced out. But we've had some challenges trying to get this taken care of, and the hope was to try to sort it out before we go into Fourth of July weekend. Mike is a very conscientious business owner. He's been very nervous about not having everything in place. And so we had the opportunity, since we were having this meeting tonight, to put it on. So what I'd like to do is ask, Julian, are you going to present on this? Or just from the perspective of where things are at the moment, and then go from there?
Certainly, I have a few comments, but I'd also ask that Associate Town Council Irie Mullin, who's with us this evening, be available. Irie Mullin, who's with us this evening, be available also.
Great. If we could bring her, bring her in, that'd be great. If you wanna start, and go ahead, Julian, while she's coming up.
Certainly, yeah, members of the board, thank you, Madam Chair. As, as you know, you have a copy of a letter that I transmitted to Seafood Sam's regarding the challenges that we encountered in looking at the application. The board, of course, delegated, as you know, delegated authority to me, working with members of the town staff in analyzing all the outdoor restaurant seating applications. And I'm, of course, limited by what you approved and within the guidelines issued under the emergency orders of Governor Baker. And the challenge with Seafood Sam's, and certainly Irie can further comment on that, and certainly Mr. Lewis will as well, is that the fundamental guideline of Governor Baker is that no liquor can be served unless food is also served with it, and it must be served at tables by waiters or waitresses. And as you mentioned, Madam Chair, that's not the manner in which Seafood Sam's has traditionally operated. That was also the case with Bad Martha's, which is a newer establishment. However, they were not operating with, fundamentally with waiters and waitresses either. And the, the, I'm limited issuing permits that mandate that governor's order that liquor can only be served along with food and at two persons at seated tables that are ordering off a menu. And understand that that's not the business model of Seafood Sam's. Bad Martha's advised us they were going to make that adjustment, and their permit was issued contingent upon that. The other circumstance we encountered was with the, what's called the patio areas, patio area of Seafood Sam's. We determined that a zoning board of appeals permit had been issued back, I believe it was in 2003, for service in that area. However, as per our records, that was never brought to the Board of Selectmen for the requisite approval. And that came to light as part of this temporary outdoor seating process and presented some, continues to present challenges to us, which is why we wanted to discuss it with the board. Those could all be overcome temporarily through the 1st of November. We're Seafood Sam's to desire to be willing to provide a seat, seated table service with waiters and waitresses that would be in compliance with the governor's orders and give time to come back to the Board of Selectmen to adjust that problem which we, which surfaced with the patio. And again, that's just a very small snapshot of things, and I'd welcome Irie commenting, because I'm, it's, it's likely that I may have missed some important details as well.
So, oh, go ahead, Doug. Jones, I would just like, let me just ask, if IT can please promote Mr. Lewis to someone who is participating, please, so that he can be part of the discussion, rather than just through chat?
Could the service you're talking about, Mr. Souza, just be for the beer and wine? It doesn't matter for the food. They don't need to be served for food at these tables. They can get the food at the counter and bring that outside, no problem. It's just the beer and wine, is that correct? Or maybe Irie can answer that?
Yeah, Irie's best answer to that. Irie, please.
So, the governor's order that permits restaurant operations in Phase 2, it defines restaurant as seated table service of food. And so all of those words each have meaning. So it's not just that patrons have to be seated versus standing up. It's also that there must be table service, and that differs from counter service or takeout. And I had the opportunity to be on several statewide conference calls with municipal attorneys across the state, that we had the great privilege of having the Executive Director of the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission come on and answer specific questions as all these municipalities were facing the same challenge of approving appropriate outdoor seating under the Phase 2 standards and Order 35 of the governor that granted that emergency power to select boards. And through that process, the Executive Director conveyed to us not only what AVCC's standards for outdoor alcohol service are, but also the precise interpretation of what this outdoor restaurant service was from other state agencies that were involved in promulgating those orders. And so the Executive Director, Ralph Sacramone, has repeatedly emphasized to all the people that were on those calls that it must be seated table service specifically by waiters. And under the Phase 2 standards that still apply now that we are in Phase 3, it's still, those standards still apply to restaurants, that what is allowed to be operating is specifically table service. And so that does differ from takeout through a window or a counter.
So, does anyone have a question? I just wanted to actually, oh, go ahead, Nancy?
Just for a point of clarification. So has Seafood Sam's up until this point been able to serve alcohol in a takeout manner?
Do you mean up until this point during COVID or in?
Just in his regular, prior to COVID.
So, Mr. Lewis can speak to that, but as someone who eats there probably too frequently, you go in and you, you know, you make your order for your food and your alcohol, and then when you're, when, you know, sometimes you get your alcohol at the counter in advance, you know, and you can take it to your seat and wait, but often you get your alcohol with your, on your tray, right, with, with your meal. So it would, it would be taking out to those seats that he has set up versus, you know, I think what Irie is saying is now that is no longer allowed, either of those things, whether it's picking the food up or the alcohol up, is no longer allowed under this, the governor's order.
So I guess my question is, was it previously allowed to pick up your food and your alcohol and take it outside?
To his outdoor patio, yes.
Just may I comment on that? So as I understand, that was the practice that was occurring for the last 17 years. However, the description of the licensed premises for the purposes of the AVCC for the alcohol service license, it was never updated in any record that anyone's been able to locate to include that newly constructed patio area, which was the construction of the physical structure, was permitted by ZBA special permit, but that didn't alter the existing alcohol service license. So while it appears that alcohol was being picked up at a counter and transported to tables on the patio for this period of time, it also appears that that was in violation of the existing alcohol license.
So I'm gonna go with Nancy, and then I'll go to Doug Brown. Go ahead, Nancy.
Which is why I asked the question, because when I looked through the, the emails and through Irie's opinion, that's in some ways how it read. So I just wanted clarification on that. So thank you, Irie.
So we, yeah, just to, to be clear, we have a long-term issue that we'll need to address. It doesn't need to be particularly laborious, but, you know, it looks like there's a very good record from the ZBA about what took place. And it looks as if maybe that last step for the Board of Selectmen didn't take place, although I think Mr. Lewis has a different recollection. And the, I think you can see from the ZBA notes, it was pretty in-depth that there was, you know, adjustments made to the patio. And so there's a long-term issue, but, you know, I think that we could maybe perhaps set that aside as we look at what happens in the, the short term. Because I think we would be, and Irie, can you correct me if I'm wrong, just like we've been able to license some outdoor space for other, can, can you just speak to the piece about, you know, so for instance, a quarter deck is serving in the back of the quarter deck on the, the sort of parking lawn area that normally they have no service on. And they're able to do that because that license has been extended to that part of the premises?
Yes, so the governor delegated to the Select Board the emergency power under all of these emergency COVID orders to override zoning, planning, and also, sorry, to override zoning, planning, and also to temporarily amend alcohol service permits without first going to the state, which is normally the procedure, and also to amend common vicsulars without a hearing. So those emergency orders are tied to the specific wording of Order 35. And Order 35 states outdoor restaurant service, and then within the order, it repeatedly states outdoor table service of food.
Great. So I just, I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Irie.
So for the quarter deck, what was approved was the area behind the building is, meets AVCC standards because it's contiguous, so it's touching the existing licensed premises. It's enclosed by at least rope, and that the service provided within that area is seated and provided by waiters, and that any alcohol is served only with a meal. And then within the seating area, there's physical distancing. So all of those criteria have to be met in order to meet the requirements that the Select Board has for exercising its emergency power that's been delegated by the governor.
Great. So just to clarify, the issue of the patio, we can, you know, set aside for the time being because we have it within our discretion, whatever we decide to do to, it is, that is contiguous to the building, and if we're able to, you know, figure out the other components that Irie just enumerated, we can then deal with whatever missing pieces we have for the, the patio long-term at a later date. So at present, what we're really looking at is how to address that particular challenge of the table service. So if I could ask, Mr. Lewis, could you just speak to that component and how your business, if your business can accommodate that, understanding that it's a challenge given how the business has run for so long? You just need to unmute yourself.
There we go.
Yep, there you go, welcome.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, everybody, number one. I do also wanna publicly thank a few of you for trying to help me resolve this, as it's been coming up on me. And lastly, I wanna do say that I am not a business guy trying to buck the system here. I do take this whole COVID thing completely serious. And, and as far as my establishment goes, I've been, I feel I've been doing an extraordinary job thus far. Now, having said that, I'm a tad confused about, I was, I spoke with Doug today, but I was, I was confused up until now about whether the whole issue was the patio issue, the beer and wine issue, or the outdoor seating in general. Because my understanding was under the takeout, I, I haven't added any tables, I just moved them around. And I did read, attached the email I got from Doug to come to this meeting. I read some of the comments, and I'm a little clearer on what's the situation. But having said that, the way it has worked for me up until now, the, the soonest COVID came about in March, I shut my doors, went to complete takeout, no bathroom facilities, no anything, and did that until Phase 2 was okay. My understanding of Phase 2 was to do the outside seating before the part two of Phase 2. All my staff wears masks. We make customers wear masks. When it was just when we started allowing people back into the building, we were allowing a maximum of five persons in at a time. And then to go to the outside seating, originally you would go out the front door and around, but when we were allowed to have people back inside, I opened up the dining room that butts that patio that's been in discussion without, and had it roped off. So you would order at the counter, go to the outside seating. When your food was ready, you come in that door, which is separate from the main entrance, and pick up your food. And my struggle, I guess, with it all, and I do understand the government's order, the governor's order to a, to a degree, but my take on it is, you know, if you're ordering at the counter and going out, it's separate door, it's, and everybody's wearing a mask, as far as the COVID piece of this goes, I truly believe that my, is, my operation is doing a better job, because it's A, there's not people sitting at tables without masks, and one of my kids going up and taking their order for people without masks to, to my one employee with a mask, say. Everybody involved in the interaction of the business transaction, for the lack of a better word, at my place, customer and employee is masked through the entire transaction, from, from ordering and then when you come and pick up your food. Now, if it's a pickup for takeout, which is allowed, it's the exact same scenario if you're gonna go out and sit at the picnic table. So if it's a beer and wine issue, and I did mention this to Doug as well, you know, it's, the beer and wine is not a big profit center for me. I mean, I do $200, $300, $400 worth of beer and wine on a busy day versus thousands in food. I just don't wanna lose the guy that's gonna get, go somewhere else because he can't have a Budweiser with his clay plate, you know?
I don't think, yeah, Mike, I don't think that the food, so let's not separate the food and the alcohol, because the order is really, speaks to both of those things.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? The order is saying, if you're gonna have tables, that you have to have table service for, you know, for food and for alcohol. The one piece about the alcohol is it just says you can't have alcohol by itself, but you don't do, nobody comes and has, that doesn't happen anyway. You're not a bar, so, you know.
But Megan, I wanna interrupt, but if, if those tables were actually the town tables, not, not Mike's tables, this would all be legal.
Yes, they could go and sit with their takeout. They could go and get their takeout and go and sit and eat there.
On the town tables with no problem, is that correct? And where I think Michael's correct is, he is actually providing a service which is more COVID-protected than in some ways what the law says. And this is where I think we may have to maybe re-take a little stand and say, we're gonna lean on taking responsibility for doing what is best, not necessarily what is the law exactly says. But what I, where I was concerned is if people were coming back in to buy more beers because they wanted them for their dinner, that would be a problem for me. But if they're just getting their, placing their order, picking up their order when it's ready and taking it outside, that seems to me the safest from a COVID possibility, probability, and also pretty safe from an ABC thing, because they're not buying more beer, more wine, and really violating the concerns that liquor might have.
So I saw Irie's hand, and then let's also have Scott, can you just weigh in on that? I have to shut my video off for one moment, but please go right ahead. So Irie, go ahead, and then Scott, if you wanna weigh in at all on some of those concerns about the safety component. Okay?
So the scenario that Doug mentioned, if takeout was picked up and taken to a public park with picnic tables, food can be consumed at those picnic tables. Again, this is where alcohol and food do start to diverge. Any consumption of takeout alcohol in a public park would be an open container violation, so that is different. In terms of if it, if someone were to come to Seafood Sam's and pick up takeout right now, there is certainly physical seating allowed on the patio that's not alcohol consumption approved, and those could be considered takeout tables. So those tables, a person could come and pick up food that's takeout and go out to the patio, the physical footprint of the patio and eat at those tables. Where the problem becomes is that Seafood Sam's is subject to a special permit issued by the ZBA, which defines the parameters of where the business is operating because the lot is undersized. So expansion of the physical seating area, even if the number of tables has not changed, but the, the square footage of where it is on the property would be a violation of that special permit. To alter a special permit without any sort of emergency procedure, you need to go through the public hearing process, which would take several months. And that was the purpose of the Order 35 procedure that allowed Select Boards to override zoning permits, was to get around problems like this. So if the business, if it were a different business that was not on a lot that was subject to a zoning problem, it actually would have been possible to put more picnic tables outside that would, without a zoning bylaw violation, that then people could use for consumption of food-only takeout. Again, any consumption of alcohol outside of a licensed premises without an emergency alteration would be a liquor license violation. So it could be food-only, but this business in particular, because of the strictures of the lot and the pre-existing ZBA permit, puts it in a situation where only the tables that can be spaced on its existing patio can be used for takeout food consumption only without an emergency order approval by the Select Board under Order 35.
Thank you. Wish we are here and we can do tonight, if that's how the board votes. So that's, that's the point of that order, is to allow for that flexibility, because obviously the, you know, the Because obviously, the, you know, the intent is just that we understand that they were gonna, you know, the governor and his advisory board understood there are probably going to be many situations such as this where, you know, the intricacies of zoning and planning would really limit some of the options available. Scott, did you want to weigh in at all on your thoughts or concerns about the way that Mr. Lewis is talking about service being done at his business?
Well, it appears to be fine. I've gotten zero complaints, to be honest with you, Mr. Lewis. I think since I was here in two thousand and two, I don't think I've ever gotten a complaint about the Seafood Sam's, to be honest with you. Alcohol is a food. I mean, it's just treated like Diet Pepsi in the, in the food code. It makes no distinction. I haven't received any COVID-related complaints and the process that he has is inadequate. No doubt. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Doug Jones.
So what would be our problem if we approved Mr. Lewis doing what he wanted to? Could the A B C come back and tell us we did it wrong?
Yes.
And is that something we can say, we're willing to risk that?
The risk would be not for the select board. It would be for the license holder.
So how do you feel about the assumption of that risk, Mr. Lewis?
I, you know, if it's, I'm kind of confused on the fact. Ari, thank you very much, by the way. If, so the beer and wine inside my building is fine and food on the existing patio under what you're saying is fine, but not.
No, okay.
It's hard to grasp.
Yeah, under the current orders, and Ari, just correct me. Any service that you have right now, like let's not talk about any service, beer or food, right now is supposed to be table service. So the tricky challenge right now is that your model is not table service. You know, your model is pickup. And so, you know, your, and that's different than, you know, when people do takeout, they're taking it out and they're going somewhere else. But, you know, you're serving out, you can't do the, you know, the way that you're doing it right now, and you've always run your business, is not the way that the order reads for, for service right now. Is that correct, Ari?
One clarification, the phase two standards do say that existing restaurant takeout can be consumed at tables either indoor or outdoor that are available for takeout customers, provided they are cleaned to the standards that are required in phase two. The issue that it gets into is whether you cannot consume alcohol, takeout alcohol on premises. So alcohol service, this is where it starts to diverge. Again, if there was a way to put more tables on the lawn of Seafood Sam's without violating the Z B A special permit, they would be able to essentially operate as a takeout food only, buy it inside, walk outside and sit at tables.
With alcohol? No.
Not with alcohol.
Right. So, I mean, the real, the, the sort of conundrum is either this board could vote to approve it, perhaps the A B C C does not feel that it's appropriate. And that comes, you know, onto you, Mr. Lewis, because it's your, your, you know, license. Or you could shift your model for table service, but that's a big shift. I mean, that's not what you, you know, I don't know what your P O S system is like, you know, leaving tabs open or, you know, running, I mean, you're just, your staff just isn't set up like that from, you know, what I've seen.
Correct. I physically couldn't, the waitress service thing wouldn't, wouldn't work for me. I do, I want to resolve this. I want to be the good neighbor and please know that. My question is, what? You know, I don't want to throw other people under the bus, so I won't. But there's other businesses that have similar models to mine, you know, that have people sitting outside. And it's no different than what, you know, the people in line ordering at, say Dunkin' Donuts or Papa Gino's, et cetera, et cetera. If, so you put all that aside, it comes back to the beer and wine for takeout leaves the premises, or the beer and wine outside is, is the issue, not the ten picnic tables, the way I see it. And I, I don't know if I'm seeing it correctly because I will do whatever I can. I can't, you know, we're pushing out a lot of meals a day and I have, and then one of your, I think it was your, one of your letters, Megan. Most of my staff is high school kids. I have five tip certified people behind the counter. I mean, and Scott can attest, I run a pretty good ship here, you know?
Let me, let me just interrupt you for one, let me just interrupt you for one second, ask you a question. You have some tables open indoors now?
I do.
So is there any way that you would be able to? I, I mean, I think this is another level of complication for you. But is there a way to reserve sort of the indoor seating for individuals who are drinking alcohol and the outdoor seating for folks who aren't? I mean, I don't know how you're, you know, I think when you're at full capacity, that's probably going to be a pretty difficult thing to manage, but just, just wondering what your thoughts are.
I will do whatever I can to make this, I mean, it's Fourth of July weekend, you know what I mean? I will do whatever I can to make this work. The, I don't know, it seems to me most people are still in the, they want to be outside. You know what I mean? People, I probably have ten tables in here that, because I have them very well distanced. Like I said, I'm taking this whole thing very serious on my end as well, as well for my staff and my customers. But ninety-five percent of the people want to be outside.
Gussel the beer before they go outside.
Yeah, which is, yeah, no, exactly.
Again, that's not what we want them to do.
Exactly.
No. So what, anything else from this, this board, Sam?
I have, I have a question, please. You know, I'm bothered. I've been in the Seafood Sam's many times. But in terms of controlling infection, transfer of infection, the fact that people are congregating around that counter to put their orders in is a fundamental issue in my mind. Because masks, if you sneeze into a mask, you are not going to stop all of the aerosols from being transmitted to the people around you. And so I have an issue with the fact that whether you're serving of food only or alcohol and food or just alcohol, you've got people congregating like that waiting to pay and no control of distancing. You've got a fundamental issue of transmitting disease. And that's why I think they did not open it up, why they're basically saying they want waiter or waitress service to spread people out and try to control the intermingling of people, some of whom may actually be infected.
So could that, in your mind, Sam, be addressed with further social distancing requirements for people making their orders? I know he's already only limiting certain amount of people in, but even if that was spaced out further?
Well, I think that's a step in the right direction. And I think you would, I feel like we would have as a minimum, put that kind of a constraint on it now. But as I recall, going and coming from your restaurant, you know, requires you to be passing fairly close to people. That entranceway is pretty narrow. So if you've got people coming and going, there's a. So I'm going to defer to Scott on this because, you know, he's more schooled than that. But that's the issue I have, and it is related to your business model. And I hope I can go back to Seafood Sam's again someday. But, but we're dealing with an infectious virus here and trying to control that spread from one individual to another. And that's what's worrying me about the way that you run your business. If you could do takeout through a window and you didn't have, and people could space themselves out, it'd be outside when they put their orders, outside when they're waiting, I'd feel much better about that.
Scott, could you speak to Sam's point in terms of differentiating, you know, when people are going for takeout and there are a certain number? Can you talk about how many people are allowed in a restaurant when we were doing just the takeout? What that looks like? And then maybe we could talk about applying that to Mr. Lewis's model?
Yeah, well, yeah, I could see how that could create a bottleneck, I guess, with the people coming in both directions. After you pay, you'd have to go out the same way that you came in. I think one way to solve that might be some sort of partitioning between the incoming and outgoing, or have the outgoing go into a different exit. Do you have a second exit?
I do on the back of that main dining.
Yeah, so maybe the best, the best way I would envision this is to have the main crew come in to order through the main door and have people exit another door. So I haven't reviewed, you know, we don't review everybody's plans. So that would be the way to do it, is have one-way traffic. Because where people are going to come back and forth across each other while they're in there ordering. So that would be one way to solve that.
So Mike, what about if, you know, when people come in the front ramp entrance? And you have the two registers? If, if, you know, one, if people who were getting takeout were able to wait, you know, if they went, if you're looking at the registers, your, your sort of emergency exit door to the left? If people waited outside there rather than waiting for their, their orders?
Most do, but I, Sam is right about the skinny part of that. And then I brought that up, you know, that's, again, you know, it's no better or worse than Dunkin' Donuts. You know what I mean? And I'm not trying to, if I made that outside seating, if I made, if you came in and ordered that way and went out to that, to wait out that back door, it actually frees up a sense in a lot of ways because it also helps if you were coming in from the outside seating to pick up food as well, that's less, a lot less traffic. So, yeah, I could agree with that a hundred, a hundred percent.
So in other words, you know, if you're enforcing the rule of no more than, you know, whatever you can space out six feet as people are ordering, they're not allowed to wait there. You wait for your takeout on that, that left side if you're doing takeout. If you're getting eaten, I think you've been directing people out to their outdoor seating and they wait. I mean, maybe you can think of another, you know, I guess there's nothing we can do about them coming back in because they have to pick up their food. But if no one's waiting there, you're going to have a much, you're going to have a much, you're not going to have that bottleneck, is what I'm saying.
Correct. I agree.
Doug Brown.
So maybe you could do, put some menus on the tables or on the way to the tables and have the majority of the crowd go to their tables. One person from the group go up with the order and put it in and then go back to the table with the food when it's, you know, you're going to go back with your little lobster thing and wait for it to buzz, and then one person come back. Rather than have the whole family looking at the board and standing in that area. If you can all, you know, just print a bunch of paper menus that people can take to their table.
I have plenty.
Yep. I think that would be a good, a good help.
But if you're, and if you're just, if you're enforcing that limitation of the number of people who are allowed in the building, you know, that's, that's also going to do the same thing. So, I mean, it's, obviously, everything takes a little bit longer, you know, if you're, you know, you've got a family that's, that's ordering and it's taking a while. But, you know, you got, you have some pretty fast employees there. So once it's in, it's in. And, you know, instead of having, I think the big concern is really that congregating, congregating around the registers and people waiting for food. And like Doug Brown just said, you know, a whole bunch of people in one family trying to order. So what else, anything, Nancy, is that a hand up?
Yes. So my question is for Ari. And, and it is, is there any issue for this board or for the town if the board votes to set aside what the A B C C is asking restaurants to do? In other words, instituting waiter waitress service to serve alcohol?
So that is what the A B C C is requiring, but it's also separately the requirement for phase two restaurant reopening. So just like, because bars cannot be open, one of the distinctions of how they're distinguishing a bar from a restaurant, again, is that they define restaurants as seated, seated table service of food along with that alcohol. So it's not just an A B C C issue. The A B C C issue arises from the existing phase two standards. So yes, there is the issue of if a business is not complying, that business is potentially violating the governor's phased reopening plans. That enforcement for the business is from either locally, the Board of Health, health agent, or state level, the A G's office or A B C C. But also the select board has a limited grant of power from the governor by which it is legal for it to override zoning and other restrictions on properties. So in, if the select board were to authorize something that does not follow the phase two orders and is not seated table service, it would be acting outside of the grant of authority by the governor. And therefore, it would be without authority to do that. If the select board voted to do that, we would have to see what state action was taken against the select board. I don't know.
Thank you.
So just practically speaking for a moment, I mean, I understand why they're just trying to distinguish and how they have to use certain terms to distinguish, you know, restaurants from bars. What I would say is that we are in extraordinary times. And this is a business that is clearly not a bar. It has never functioned as a bar. Doesn't have any of the characteristics of a bar. While I understand that the seated table service has a very specific meaning, it is, we're being told by this particular business owner that that is not possible with his model. And I, you know, I believe that he is being accurate and candid about that. And I, my own comments that I've made and other communications about this to Mr. Lewis, you know, he raises the issue of the age of his, most of his workforce not being able to actually carry alcohol, et cetera. And just that it's not a business that's really set up well for, for waiter waitresses. I know other facilities have been, Mr. Suso raised the issue of bad Martha's being able to change that. I would just note that, you know, every business is, is unique. And we are up against some real challenges. And if a business is not able to operate because of, you know, the structures that are seeming to be put in place for, you know, something like this, you know, we're not talking about, you know, I think we're talking about some variation or, or deviating from those very strict standards under very specific circumstances for this particular business, if that's what the board decides to do. In terms of the A B C C, I mean, it, you know, whatever they might say to us or whatever they might say to Mr. Lewis is going to be seen within the context of this entire discussion and the pandemic. So we know that the A B C C has been active. They were active in Yarmouth with a particular facility that was open beyond the parameters of what was allowed. So I don't think we can, you know, take it lightly. But I, you know, I'm just not sure how we get a workaround for this particular business that allows it to stay open. I saw your hand, Doug Brown.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think as long as we are doing the best possible, what we can with this particular business, I don't think there's any practical way to expect this business to be able to completely comply. The physical structure of the building, he can't rebuild his building, just, you know, just like that. The fact that he's got, I think it was ten workers that were denied their J one visas or whatever type of visa, that's a big impact as well. We don't want to put people out of business. There's going to be enough of that coming already. So I think that we should find some conditions and some findings to go along with whatever decision we make that will ensure that we're doing the best possible outcome that we can for both Mr. Lewis and for the general public. And if we do that, it's not as if we're disregarding the governor's orders. We're just trying to work with it in the best possible way that we can, which is what I hope we can do.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? And does anyone have, yes, Sam?
I, the only thing I want to say is, I mean, the reason that we need to be making good decisions is to control the spread of COVID nineteen. And so the combinations that we might put in place to allow Seafood Sam's to open, I think have to take that into consideration. So we need to see a way for them to conduct the business, given the limitations of their plant and their business model, that will basically minimize that spread. And I think that's got to be part of our decision and our justification for deviating.
Absolutely. We just had a statement from one, let me just read this one statement. Wendy Brown, I think it is, was asking if, and I'll direct this to Mr. Lewis. Would you be able, so if people place their order, are you able to have a runner deliver? Or would you be able to do that rather than, you know, so not a waitress coming and taking there? Or if people place their order, they go and sit where they're going to sit and a runner delivers that so that they're not coming back and forth?
It would be tough, but I had an idea. How, that dining room that is on the front of the building that, that has the door going out to the patio? Because the problem is, I was telling Doug this morning, you know, you've got fifty people outside. You've got a fifteen-year-old kid trying to figure out whose thing is what. But how about if we didn't allow the people to come back into that foyer, for the lack of a better word, which Sam was talking about? If, if, so your little pager, sanitized pager goes off, they, my staff meets them at, in that dining room with the tray. So it's kind of like a half, a fifty-fifty thing, if you would. It's not really us, because then it solves, it would help my business model. I wouldn't be able to, and what also, the kids could bring the tray to the person, say, at the patio door, rather than out trying to find them in, out in the seating area outside, you know what I mean? I think that that would eliminate a few things. That would eliminate some of Mr. Patterson's concerns. It would eliminate a lot. It would eliminate a lot of the traffic flow and it's somewhat of a.
The kids can't deliver the beer or wine though.
Absolutely not. Right.
So they, they still.
Give them the beer and wine, give them the beer and wine when we check the ID and take their order at the beginning anyway.
Right, that, that would be a better idea. Yep.
May I also remember that a lot of businesses have now put these Plexiglas shields in to separate the customer from whoever's taking the orders. And I think that needs to be a piece of this. You know, you talk about handing somebody a, you know, a tray with a, a number of dishes on it and what have you. Seems to me it needs to be structured in such a way that you have some kind of a Plexiglas glass shield that separates the, your, your employees from that customer. And maybe they set it on a counter so that they slide it through. And I've seen that done at a number of businesses.
Don't you already have that?
My concern is, is minimizing the spread of COVID-19 and, and that's got to be structured into whatever arrangements.
Um, Scott.
Um, if it pleases the board to, to address Sam, you can make a contingent upon having it approved by the health department or some sort of, you know, that would be, you can kind of move it through. He can come see me, think it through, and then we can meet him out there or something of that nature, if that helps.
That's a great idea. Mike, one other, that, that's a great idea, Scott. One other, um, question. Uh, does your, your system allow you to assign a number?
On the POS, you mean?
To, to an order. So in other words, say somebody gets their pager, the pager just buzzes. But, um, I mean, if someone were to get an order and they, their number is, you know, 100 and your server comes out and says 100, you know, and they put their hand up and they bring it to the table. Is there, do you got, do you have a mechanism to do that? Does your POS have that ability to assign a number to an order?
We've looked in the pager numbers, so I would have to see if the actual ticket could do that.
My guess is that most tickets, you know, can have, you know, have the number.
It's a pretty new system, so it's not, yeah, I, I, I would have to check that though. I don't want to.
I mean, that might just cut down.
But I believe something would, right.
It might just cut down even that, just that back and forth, you know, if, if, um, you know, they're able to go out. So, you know, maybe we can have.
Yeah, that's why I was saying to meet them at the door. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry.
No, no, that's, I, I'm just thinking of another way of if they can, you know, announce their number or whatever it is, you know, then they can even comply with the table service piece without you having the waitresses and waiters necessarily for each, you know, customer. Doug, Doug, uh, Jones?
The question for Irene is if they pick up their beer and wine at the counter when they order it, where can they take it? Clearly they can take it into the building. And I think if we approve it, they could take it to the patio. Are we still restricted? They cannot take it to the new picnic tables?
That was for you, Irene. Did you hear that?
Um, as I said before, the order 35 parameters state that it must be seated table service in order to have alcohol outside. So my opinion is that the alcohol would have to be kept within the license premises of the existing license premises, which is the building and that also under phase two standards, that would also be operating as seated table service by waiters in order to be compliant with the phase two reopening standards separate from the alcohol license permit. So if you, as a board, want to, uh, exceed or adjust the parameters of those things, I can't really opine as to whether the patio is any different from the lawn.
Anything else from the board? I think the idea by Doug Brown of, um, either making some findings, um, and then I liked Scott's idea of having, um, it be something that Scott is part of the, the process going forward. Um, and so he can address, you know, those very valid concerns that Sam is raising about the, really the health, uh, public health component, um, and some of the challenge with this business. So, uh, Doug Brown.
So Mr. Lewis, do you think that if, um, we ask you to, do you think that you could have all your customers funnel through, cut through the building, go out to the outdoor area? And then one member of the family go in and do the ordering? And do you think you could manage that and then either have the runners bring the food out? That would be optimal. If you could think you could have one tip certified person to deliver that stuff. I think we might have something that would be, that we could say that we're doing the right thing.
I think it's absolutely the lesser of the evils, the way you put it, Doug. Um, have them all go out that way. One person come in and do the order. And then, because the POS is, can't move.
Right.
And then, um, yeah, I could just give it, I mean, it's like anything, it's the same as any of you folks on your jobs. We're all learning as we go here. Um, and I, and I will do the best I can to help to do whatever you ask me to do.
If that runner is serving the food, Irene, would you say that's counter table service?
Uh, per the advice that we have been given directly from the state, no. The concern has been articulated through the state that the reason that the order was drafted the way that it was was to prevent people from going back and forth and congregating at counters. The idea was that servers would go back and forth and people would remain seated. Um, so that is the information that I've been given by the state.
But I would just say that the way we just articulated it addresses that very concern that we're not going to allow, the, the way that it's going to be managed, people are not going to actually be coming back and forth to the counter. So they're going to make their order, they're going to go to their table and, um, ideally a runner is going to bring that food to them rather than coming back and forth into the building to pick up their food. Uh, Mr. Lewis?
If server was going to serve them.
Correct.
I currently have what we call bus kids, but I currently have two young kids out there the entire time I'm open that do what you're talking about. We need ketchup, we need napkins, we need, they come in and get the ketchup, napkins, more cottage sauce, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that, that's been in place since I started the outside seating because I too don't want the people running in and out of here. So I, I think that I've done, and my question to Irene is, isn't my business model of the order the same as, say Dunkin' Donuts, the same as Papageno's, the same? I, they're going and ordering at the counter and either sitting outside or going sitting on the picnic tables on the library lawn. It's the same. That part of it is the exact same. So if we can come up with a plan, team up and come up with a plan like, uh, Mr. Brown said about having them, I think we solve the whole issue as a group and doing the best we can.
Yeah, I think what, oh, go ahead, Irene.
Sorry, I thought that was a question to me.
No, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the difference between, uh, an operation like Dunkin' Donuts or Papageno's is that it's takeout food only. Um, if those businesses have existing outside tables, again, it states clearly in the phase two guidance that, uh, takeout tables can be uh, made accessible to patrons so long as they are cleaned to phase two standards. Um, specific properties may have restrictions on adding additional tables outside for takeout of food only. That is the case with this property because it's subject to a special permit.
Thank you.
And, and where yours starts to get a little different is when you add the alcohol component in. You know, in other words, in other words, you could, if you weren't serving alcohol, you could, people could just, we could approve people to take the food as a takeout order and sit outside on your picnic tables. But when you then introduce the alcohol component, it, it changes that a bit because then you can't do takeout alcohol. Right? So that, so there's, there's that little piece there. So, uh, what is the pleasure of the board? Um, if we are, do we feel that we can have Mr. Lewis work with, um, Scott? I think this board needs to make a decision about this particular license. Um, if we want to make some findings, uh, we can. Doug Jones?
But takeout alcohol is allowed now under this order, right? It just, you can't eat it, drink it in public. So if this, if his patio were actually owned by a different company, not by the town and not by him, it would be okay for them to buy it at his place, go to someplace private and eat it and drink it. It's just that, and so my suggestion that it's public property, yes, we can't have public consumption of alcohol, but if it were a private piece of property not owned by him, they would be allowed to take it to this private place and drink and eat with no problem.
Yes, I mean, because they had the takeout component of, the takeout alcohol component of the governor's orders.
But my understanding in that situation is that it has to be taken out to a demarcated area, roped off. That's where it's consumed. They're not allowed to just drive off with it.
No, you were, you were allowed, you were allowed to drive off with it because at that point in time it was only curbside.
Right.
Is it, you know, back when the, when they first allowed the takeout, they then allowed takeout alcohol with your takeout order to take away wherever you were going to go. Obviously, as Doug is saying, you couldn't open it up in the parking lot and start having a, you know, drink. But if you were going to your own, you know, whatever, somebody's house or something like that, you could take the alcohol away. Um, but we don't, but we don't have that situation here. So, um, wh, what I would like to do, and I'll take any suggestions from the board, but I would like to, um, you know, perhaps make some findings and I would like to, uh, you know, approve this license noting some of the requirements that we've just talked about, one of them being with, um, it, it needs to be ultimately approved, um, by Scott in terms of, you know, what, whatever measures, um, Mr. Lewis puts in place from a health perspective, a board of health perspective.
So I'd be willing to make a motion that we approve the outdoor seating for Mr. Lewis and with findings that one that, uh, the large groups of customers will be directed outdoors and one customer will come in and place the order for the group. And then the runner will deliver the food to the customer outdoors, food and drink, whatever. And then, uh, there won't be any, uh, customers coming back in for drinks. Whatever you want to order will be with your meal. Is that too much, Mr. Lewis? Do you think that's manageable?
No, it's not too much at all because the, the coming back in and out is, I've already handled that with, I have kids, that's all they do is run for people. So that part, that part of it is very easy.
And the other finding would be that, um, Mr. McGann will go out and make an assessment as to any modifications that need to be done to the premises or any debarkation of, uh, creating lines for customers or whatever we need to do to keep the traffic flowing in a safe pattern. And other comments that Mr. McGann may have when he's there.
And just to further clarify that, um, there will be, uh, that Mr. Lewis will be limiting the number of individuals who are allowed in the ordering area to a number that can be appropriately socially distanced with the CDC guidelines of, of six feet apart. Um, so that that's, you know, people need to wait outside. Um, I know you already have some signage to that effect, um, but to really be enforcing that component.
And mask.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other, uh, let me, I think a further finding so that it's clear that we've heard, I think, very credible, uh, testimony from Mr. Lewis that, um, his business model does not, um, allow him in the number of employees, the age of his employees and the, and the, um, the way that his POS system is set up doesn't allow him um, to, um, in, in any sort of, uh, practical way accommodate table side service.
Ordering.
Ordering, yeah.
Ordering, yeah. Doug, you're, you're muted. Yeah.
Do we want to include the acceptance of the patio? The ZBA approved but had never come back to the board's selection?
Yes. And then Mr. Lewis, we'll have to in the long term, address that issue, but for the period of time that goes until the November date that this runs out, um, that would be included.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, what this person doesn't talk about is the alcohol.
I, that's what I was just going to ask. Are we saying that we are allowing the alcohol to be served out on the patio without waiter service?
I, uh, my personal feeling is that, yes. I mean, the patio, the lawn, these are all parts of the business that we are allowed to extend that alcohol consumption into. Um, and it, I don't think it's going to make, although frankly, not that many people are sitting on the patio because it gets pretty, pretty hot there. I've seen more of the people on the outside, that outside table area, uh, uh, picnic table area, but, um, I don't think it, it makes sense to cut and paste. I think if we're going to allow the alcohol service with all of these requirements we've just talked about, um, that would be my position that we would do so.
I think so too. I think we have to be practical and honest with what we're approving because we're not going to approve something that's not, not doable. I mean, the people are going to be outside, as Mr. Lewis said, everyone wants to be outside. It's safer for everyone right now. And when I had a conversation with him this morning about how the business is operating, he said he was almost at the point where he would just say the heck with the alcohol because if it's going to cause him a problem, he'll let it go. I don't want him to have to do that because I think it's just a part of his business. It's going to be diminished because like he said, there's a certain amount of people that are going to really want to have a beer with a clam roll. I think that when you look at the numbers, if, uh, the number from, uh, whatever day was he was quoting was $1,400 in sales of food, I mean, was it 1,400 or 14,000 and only a couple hundred dollars in alcohol sales.
Right.
So it's a very low volume alcohol business and I've go there a lot and I don't see anybody having more than one beer that I can ever notice. And not that I really check everybody, but just saying it's not really a drinking establishment.
In, in 30 years, I've never sold more than $500 worth of beer or wine in a single day, ever. Ever. It's generally July's $250 or $300.
Can I ask Irene to come in and let us know just how lenient we can be for alcohol services out in those patio and outside areas? I, I was still under the impression there had to be some sort of demarcation. So I mean, I'd like to give, you know, Mike the opportunity to serve alcoholic beverages and maybe it'll increase his business. Um, I'd just like to know the limits that we have in, in permitting that.
He does, I will just say as far as the demarcation, he does have ropes around.
Yes.
That's good.
The area. Yeah. So Irene, um, just about that particular component.
So the A B C C standards are contiguous to the existing license premises enclosed by at least rope on all four sides. And as I stated before, seated table service by waiters.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any, any other findings? Doug Jones?
I guess just that we were talking about a parallel between Seafood Sams and Mad Martha's where it's very clear in the title of the two establishments. What is Seafood Sams putting forward is that they're selling seafood. Mad Martha's is selling beer. And to really parallel the two, I think is a little bit inappropriate that the whole purpose of this job, of this business is to sell food while the other is to sell alcohol. And so I think to, to allow them to do this, I have no problem with, well, I might put different restrictions on what Mad Martha's doing.
Great. Thank you. Good, good point. It's a different, um, emphasis on the business model. So, um.
But the, but the, the opportunity for violations is virtually the same. It's somebody handing off alcoholic beverages to a minor.
Right, but, yeah.
At that level of control or at least the, and appearances, it could be easily observed, I think is part of this as well. So I don't want to just throw out the comparison. I, I agree with you. It's a different kind of establishment. But I think we have to recognize that the control issue that A B C C seems to always be pressing is the illegal access to alcoholic beverages by minors.
Right. But they, I would say we, you know, of the three items that Irene just enumerated, um, the Seafood Sams is, is hitting two of those. And then the last is the table service, so, which we've just talked about. Um, so I, you know, and I don't, I, I don't believe, I did check, but unless it, unless I missed it, I don't believe there has been an A B C C violation for Seafood Sams. Um, I've never, yeah, I didn't think there was. Okay. Um, okay. So that is, those are the findings. And so, um, based on a motion with those findings, um, do I have a second? That was Doug Brown's, uh, motion. Do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those, um, or we'll just vote by a roll call. English Frogger, aye. Taylor?
Aye.
Brown?
You're, you're muted.
Please.
Excuse me, Brown, aye.
Okay, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you.
Megan, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, so Mike, you'll continue to work with Scott to really address those, those items that we just noted, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you all so very much.
Yep, thank you. Have a good holiday weekend. Hope it was nice visiting.
Thank you.
Take Mike back to work.
Take care, guys.
Okay, um, I promised everybody that it was not going to be a very long meeting. And so I'm making a liar out of, out of myself. So let's go through, um, the next, the, the next couple of items, um, hopefully won't be quite as long. So, um, we did have to appoint a member to the Assembly of Delegates and, um, Mr. Brown, do you want to tell us about anything that took place at the meeting yesterday?
Yeah, so I attended the meeting. It started at four o'clock and, uh, I didn't really have any opportunity to speak. I just, you know, observed the meeting throughout and all their other, uh, discussions. When it came time to discuss the Falmouth delegate position, I raised my hand as soon as the agenda item. I raised my hand as soon as the agenda item came up and I offered to speak to the fact that we were gonna, you know, we've been advertising the position and that we were gonna have a discussion on it at this meeting tonight. But I didn't get the chance because as soon as I started to talk, the speaker said, "I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, you're not a member of the Assembly. This is a closed discussion and we're gonna just have to deliberate this." And they had some questions about where Falmouth was at, which I could have answered, but unfortunately, I didn't have the opportunity. So they just decided to go forward because they feel like, you know, it was important for Falmouth to have a delegate right away because there's just too much stuff going on right now to have any empty seats. So they went ahead and appointed me because they had a letter from Mr. Suso saying that there seemed to be a sense of the Board that was maybe leaning towards appointing me, although we didn't actually make a vote. So I guess that was good enough for them. And they said, "You know, it's only for six months, so we wanna make sure it's filled. If anybody wants to apply, if there's somebody out there that may be more suited and more able to serve, then they can apply up until, I think it's July 23rd. And at the end of the six-month period, then there's another opportunity for anybody else to serve." And it's unfortunate that we didn't get to interview other people, but it's just a temporary situation.
So let me, thank you. So let me just give a little background. Obviously, Sue Moran was our representative to the Assembly. And she stepped down on May 21st. She notified Mr. Suso via email, I think later in that day. And I believe that that was a Thursday. And so we, as we normally do and as we were required to do, we advertised for the position. And there apparently was, and this missed our attention, a 30-day deadline for us to appoint someone after we had actually advertised. 31?
21.
21, okay, excuse me. So essentially, we couldn't advertise on that Friday because it was already past the time when the enterprise was taking any, you know, any advertisements or notices. And so we advertised next week. And then the week after that, it ran, as has been our usual course, to give at least two weeks for most positions so that enough eyes are on that, on the papers and you can generate some interest. We didn't receive any applications. Is that still the case, Mr. Suso?
That's correct, still none. Except for, of course, he, just within the past
Yes.
two days, he gave us his application.
Yes, other than Mr. Brown, we received no applications. This Board had talked about this very issue previously. But again, we were waiting to give that time for the application, you know, the period of time that we were posting it to toll. In the interim, we did receive a letter saying we had missed our deadline and that the Assembly was gonna decide about what they wanted to do. Maybe they would appoint their own representative. Mr. Suso, along with Town Council, very quickly responded, noted just what I had said, that we had been advertising for the position. The day, you know, the week that we would have had to make that appointment was the same week as town meeting. We were dealing with the challenges of conducting a town meeting outdoors. And so we, you know, we noted that we really hoped that they would allow the select Board to make an appointment. We felt it's, of course, the work the Assembly does is very important and we wanted Falmouth to have a strong voice. We also noted that the Board had been speaking about it and felt very confident that Doug Brown would do an excellent job representing the town. And again, that we hadn't received any other applications to consider. So the, as Doug just noted, he was appointed by the Assembly of Delegates yesterday, but is still in the view of Town Council. We still have a duty as a Board to vote our appointee. So that's what we're here to do tonight. And I'll just ask, Mr. Suso, was there anything that I missed in that recitation?
No, to the best of my knowledge, excellent summary, Madam Chair. Just a vote that would lie ahead.
Mr. Jones?
I would move that we appoint Doug Brown as our representative of the Assembly of Delegates.
Do I have a second?
Patterson, whoa.
Okay. We'll say Taylor seconded that. Thank you, Sam. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, English, Braga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye, thank you.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, and one abstention from Mr. Brown. Great, thank you, Doug. We're very excited. And also, thanks to the Assembly for really being open to that communication and hearing, you know, our strong feeling about having Doug represent us. So it was a good outcome amidst a little bit of confusion. So we appreciate that. Next, we are going to discuss and vote to approve the application for a special event. This is the Falmouth Village Association Movie Under the Stars, Falmouth Public Library Lawn, 300 Main Street. So this, Mr. Suso, if you wanna just give an introduction, this is what we've traditionally seen as the library at, the movies at Pagnunin Park. And the idea has been to shift it to the library lawn because of the larger space. So if Mr. Suso wants to just share any details, then we'll hear from our Health Agent.
Certainly, Madam Chair. The, yeah, this was proposed as a special event request, reviewed internally as per our standard protocol. And given that it falls within the timeframe that the Board had declared that any special events would be canceled through the month of August, it required this special review and the necessary assurances from the applicant. And I'm certain that, confident that Donna Buckley can affirm that as well. The assurances from the applicant that this proposal in the front of the library lawn would meet all social distancing requirements and be monitored by volunteers to facilitate compliance. And I'm certain that our Health Agent, Scott McGann, can assist with any oversight if that would be needed as well.
Great, thank you. And I know that they've already, this group has already spoken to and received permission from, and frankly, an excited endorsement from the library trustees, who looked at it and felt that it was a good use of that space. Scott, do you just wanna go back and speak to that 100 number that just came out in, that you were kind of alluding to earlier? That 100 max for outdoor events that you were just talking about?
Yeah, so gatherings were 25% occupancy, which I don't think library lawn has an occupancy number. So that's kind of not gonna work. That would be no more than 100 would have been the number under that. But going back, you know, I had asked IRE about this as well. You know, my first was, is it an organized recreational event that wasn't allowed on the Phase 2? But really, the library lawn can also be looked at as not a formal sort of venue. And so I don't know if IRE would think the 100 would apply to this event under Phase 3?
So my memory, I can pull up the order. They just released a hard copy. But I believe that that only applies to enclosed outdoor spaces. I think unenclosed outdoor spaces are without limitation, but I can double-check that right now.
You can read it, yeah. Because it just is hot off the press, so I'm gonna have it memorized by hopefully tomorrow. But yeah, so I mean, I have no problem with the event as long as we have the good social distancing and, you know, you have volunteers policing it, so. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns we wanna bring in? Are we able to, oh, there's Donna. Donna, do you just wanna give an idea of if this is allowed, when it would start? And any details about it?
Thank you very much for hearing our request to reconsider the earlier decision. Just as an aside, I know we're all on a day-to-day basis grappling with new regulations. But, you know, out of the Governor's own mouth today, he indicated that the reference to 100 people does not apply to unenclosed outdoor spaces like public parks, beaches, library lawns. And that he was, that reference to 100 is for sort of indoor/outdoor enclosed spaces. So we are looking, if this is approved, to start, hope maybe this Wednesday, July 8th. And as we discussed in the application, you know, we are using it actually as an opportunity to promote safe social distancing behavior. We are going to include with the movies a public service announcement about that. We do have monitors that will be available to, you know, help remind people to socially distance themselves. And what we have done, as the Village Association has tried to own this event ourselves, I know that the Fairgrounds is gonna hire a vendor or a vendor's gonna come in and sort of show movies for cost. What we're trying to do in the Village is show the movies, but also to create sort of an intangible connection with the Village in a time when there's really not a lot of things for people to safely do. We want to give people an opportunity to come to the community, come to the Village, have an opportunity to enjoy themselves and have a good feeling and still not, and be in a place where it's safe. Be in a place where we can have family time and still have a good feeling about the town of Falmouth.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, Doug Brown?
So could you tell us just a little bit about how the setup will be managed? Where will the screen be? Have you decided that?
So we had a meeting with the library, with Linda, and with the company that's gonna do the audiovisual. And if you're looking at the front of the library, the screen's gonna be on the right up to the Shore Street Extension, sort of kitty corner. And then what the plan is, is to rope off 50 feet from the Veterans Memorial so that people won't be sitting more than 50, less than 50 feet close to the sidewalk where the Veterans Memorial is. But the area, sort of kitty corner from the Main Street, Shore Street Extension area all the way back to the front of the library would be the area of the lawn where people would see the screen. The screen's elevated, it's 20-something feet in the air. So we don't have to worry about people sitting on blankets versus chairs. They can do either and they'll still be able to see. And it's a professional audio so that people will be able to hear. I think the audio service that they're gonna provide us, although I don't expect that we will have 200 people, but the audio will project for 200 people.
So the screen will be facing toward the library building and away from Main Street?
Yes, and behind the screen, actually, on all sides of the screen anyway, there are trees. So you can't see it if you're driving on Main Street.
Right, that's, that was what I was wondering. I don't want people trying to watch the movie while they're driving.
That would be unfortunate. No, you can't see it from Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve this? Go ahead.
Jones moves to approve.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, English, Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you, we look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a similar type of event, but this is drive-in. So this is discuss and vote to approve application for special event, drive-in movies, Barnstable County Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth. So if we could, oh, I'm sorry?
I move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Don't you wanna give them some free press about the event?
They can tell us about it in one minute, but we, so, Mr. Patterson, were you seconding that?
Scott, yes, I did second that.
Great, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we hear from the applicant?
Just wanna hear from the applicant before we just vote.
Do you wanna hear from the applicant? Okay.
Yeah, you can some press.
Well, we'll give them press, so, okay, welcome. How are you?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for getting me on this agenda, I really appreciate it. I don't know if you have put on our promoter, Kevin Pacheco should be registered, I think.
Can we see if Mr. Pacheco's able to be promoted up?
I will say, I think the reason for your quick motion for approval was because the package that you submitted was so complete.
Well, I just, again, I wanna thank you. And I also wanna let you know that Donna and I had talked and we will not be running drive-in on the night that Falmouth will be doing it. Because we don't wanna compete, so we will not be doing it Wednesday night. And again, thank you. You know, it's a tough time for all of us and I thank you for understanding the business concerns we have at the Fairgrounds, being a custodian of the Fairgrounds since 1970 in Falmouth. And I'm gonna hand the rest over to Kevin. It's exciting, he's very professional and I'm looking forward. I know he's already spoken to Scott and I think it's gonna be a good time for everybody.
Great, so welcome, Kevin. If you just wanna let us know a little bit of when it's gonna start, any fees associated with it and that kind of information.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, my name's Kevin Pacheco. I'm the General Manager of Vivid Event Productions. We also have our Operations Manager, Palmer Egan, on this meeting with us. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Selectmen and the Town Planner's Office for providing an opportunity to present this proposal on your agenda so quickly. So thank you very much. Vivid Event Productions is a local full-scale production company that plans, strategizes, produces turnkey events for businesses, municipalities, and charity organizations here in New England. We understand the profound impact that COVID-19 has on our everyday life. We have an exciting plan to bring revenue and entertainment to our local community to offer relief during these stressful times. There's an overwhelming positive response to the concept of a drive-in at the Fairgrounds. We hope to boost the local economy by attracting people from Boston, the South Coast, and the Cape Cod regions to the town of Falmouth. Due to the tourist season impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, we hope to bring in the public into our local economy as we steer through these unprecedented times. Our proposal is to provide entertainment to our community in a safe environment under the state-mandated COVID-19 guidelines. Our plan is to offer our tourists and local residents affordable, family-friendly entertainment in a clean, safe location we all love, the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, with our new partner, the Barnstable County Agricultural Society. We began working on this plan in May. And since then, we've received the green light from the police chief, the Health Department, as well as approval from the Barnstable County Agricultural Society Executive Committee. If there's any specific questions you may have, we can go through the slides if you'd like or, you know, I can touch base on the fees that associated. We, some of our fees are gonna vary. And, but we're kind of, we're gonna try $40 a vehicle that's closer to the screen. And anything that may be over six feet, which will have to park towards Rio, we would do $30. And then we're talking about a, you know, maybe like a $250 or $200 seasonal pass. All of this will be dependent on our draw. We know there's a lot of buzz in town, we know there's a lot of people that want this. And we just have to make sure the proof is in the pudding, so to speak. Are there any questions or? Nope, I can't hear you, Megan, Ms. Patterson?
Sorry. Does the Board have any questions?
I mean, it's a great package, but obvious silly question. You got two screens proposed, it's gonna be the same movie on both screens, right?
No, it is not.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, we're hoping to do two different movies. Initially, we're moving forward with our large screen and the secondary screen we will build as we see the need for it.
I see.
Yep, yep, but as of right now, we can do the two movies. I mean, as, that's our plan.
And I see in the package, it said that the FM radio will be used for emergencies, but won't the movie be broadcast on FM radio as well?
It is, it is. And so it will be the same station. So say you come in and you're listening to the movie on whatever, you know, 88.9, which we're broadcasting on. If there's any emergencies, you know, obviously, a vast weather emergency or anything that's really, really dangerous that's gonna impact our patrons, we would immediately stop the movie, you know, put an emergency evacuation procedure on the video screen as well as in the car audio. Now, if we should come across any missing persons or a child or anything like that, we're gonna have staff roaming the grounds as well to be able to locate any missing persons. Now, in the event of something like that happening, we'll work with the local authorities on the best plan. But what we have kind of in our staff handbook would be that we would wait until intermission, you know, obviously, ask the child's, you know, their parent's name and, you know, like what row they were parked in. We're gonna make sure that our communication is key as people come in and just make sure they know what row they're parked in. You know, so I don't mean to get off on too much of a tangent on that. I'm like, I don't know if I wanna talk about that for 20 minutes with you, but I.
Sounds like it must have happened before.
No, no, but it's been, it was brought up from different police chiefs on asking our plan for it. So we talked about it for about a good 20 minutes. And, but essentially, yes, if there's any emergencies, we will broadcast it onto the car radios as well as having a public address system. So if you're not standing in your So if you're not standing in your car, you can still hear what's going on in the field.
All right, I can't wait to see the movie lineup.
Me too.
Excellent.
We have some good ones planned.
When do you think you might have that lineup ready? And where, can you just tell again where people would go for that information as they go forward?
Yeah, as we move forward, we have a website built and our Facebook page built. We haven't gone live with anything because we weren't sure of approval and so we didn't want to kind of stir the pot without knowing what was going to happen. So, you know, should we move forward and be lucky enough to gain approval, we will go live and you'll hear about it on Facebook, the radio station. We've been working with Frank FM and everybody over at the Cape Media Group as far as promotion for, you know, so we'll have our website to go to, to get your tickets and, yeah, all of our marketing materials. I mean, right now, the buzz is so great. Honestly, if you just put it on a couple local, like the Falmouth discussion groups, I mean, people are, people are going to come and then word of mouth, once they see how impressive our screen is and how great the sound quality is, it's going to spread like wildfire and I think we're going to have a great season.
You might want to think about a reduced rate for the first week to get them, get them to come in.
Absolutely, and we're going to look for sponsorships and some partners in town. You know, we, we have a few, a few, we have a few plans and people that we're trying to work with as far as, you know, combined ticket with dinner and a movie, you know, go grab a dinner before you come to the movie. So there's lots of options and lots of things that we can do with this. But especially, you know, if we can get sponsorships and have, you know, just for instance, say like a Patella Lumber or somebody hosting a Thursday night for their, for their great customers or just, you know, free tickets. We've seen that at a lot of places where LL Bean will host a Thursday night for free and, you know, just to do things like that. But also, yeah, if the $40 seems excessive and we'll know immediately once we, once we post it, we'll, we'll work with the, with the town. We want to make it affordable and fun for everybody to come. I don't want to make it so expensive or anything that, you know, that we only have people come out once or twice. You know, we want people to come every week or multiple times within the week and watch some great programming with their family and, you know, just get out in these tough times.
Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
If I could just say one thing, I think Kevin's missing the big expense to this whole thing with the $40 ticket prices. 50% of it goes to the licensing of the movie.
Absolutely, it's an expensive endeavor.
And of course, they're being, obviously, we've lost our, our whole budget this year. So they're being very generous, what they're giving back to us to be able to support so that we come out of this. On the, on the other side, my big goal as manager is that I have a full staff going into next year and to be able to carry them through the winter.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? No, okay, great. So we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, English Frogga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
And Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great, thank you. We look forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Happy Fourth, everybody.
Thank you, too. Very exciting.
Good job thinking up something to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Anything, sorry, my agenda is just closing out on me on my other computer. I think that was the last item because we already did the beach update.
I move adjourned.
Thank you.
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment, English Frogga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor? We may...
Think her video might have cut out.
Okay, and Brown?
Brown, aye.
Okay, that's all right. We still have a quorum, so thank you all very much. Thanks to everyone. Iri, thank you for sticking around and Scott, really appreciate it.
That was the July.
I got kicked out, I'm sorry.
Misbehaving. All right, thank you very much. Happy Fourth of July, everyone. Thank you.
Be safe.
Happy holiday.
Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747 or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally-owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape'n Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for fctv.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant, located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar. We're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.